All right. Good evening. I'll call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board for June 2nd. We've got Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim and myself here for our agenda tonight. Our first item of business is Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for May 19th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's take up items two, three, four, five, and six. Class B beer license renewals, class B combo liquor license renewals, reserved class B combo liquor license renewals, class A combo liquor license renewals, class B beer and class C wine, 2025 liquor license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Clerk, everything's in order on all these renewals?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is the Barton House renewal for 2025, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick, Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping license renewals. I will motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one is marriage license. Massage license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take up 10, 11, and 12. New amusement device license, amusement device license renewals, and amusement arcade license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next one is Stingers Golf and Recreation New Amusement Device Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last one is Pawn Broker, Secondhand Jewelry Dealer, and Secondhand Article Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have four agenda items this evening. The first one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes for May 19th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Schmidt.
Second.
Ann Berquist, thank you. Any corrections, additions, deletions? There being none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The second item is Resolution Number Nine. Accept funds from the Washington County Municipal Radio Grant Program. Welcome, Chief Norin.
Good evening. Thank you. Before you have a resolution to accept, consider to accept funding from the county municipal radio grant program, these radios are designated to go to a new command truck that we'll be purchasing this year, a support car arriving in June. I believe we obtained that car from the police department, and our new engine that we'll get sometime in March of '26. The grant request is for $60,000 from the county radio grant program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Sparts and Schmidt. Any questions for Chief? There being none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is Resolution Number 10 to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have several very impressive community donations to present to the common council. The first donation of $280 was donated by St. Lawrence Congregation for our Special Olympics program. The second donation is $5,000 donated by the Rust Darrow Group for presenting sponsor for the 2025 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. The third, a very impressive donation of $20,000, was donated by the West Bend Sunrise Rotary Foundation for the Regger Park Aqua Park. The next donation of $9,000 was donated by an anonymous donor for the Ridge Run Cabin renovations. This was the fourth donation from this anonymous donor for a total commitment of $114,000 for that project. The next donation of $200 was donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for the Riverside Disc Golf Course for future improvements that amended at Riverside Park. The last very impressive donation is an in-kind donation, the amount of $14,500 from Spratzy and Carter Construction LLC for the renovation of the White Family Cabinet at Ridge Run Park. We would like to send out a huge thank you to these donors, again, our community partners that helped really make West Bend a pretty awesome community, a great place to live, work, and enjoy life. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Butchlick and Sizer. Any questions for Mike? Any comments? I'll echo those sentiments, Mike, that to this impressive group of individuals and organizations, they make quality of life here in West Bend phenomenal. So our gratitude with that. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our fourth item is Resolution Number 11 authorizing the appropriation of insurance payment for downtown Old Settlers Park gazebo. Mike, you're still here, so I'll take that one away.
I will take that. After an automobile accident in October of 2024, the gazebo in Old Settlers Park had, was removed. The damage during this automobile accident was too severe, and the structure needed to be removed for the safety of our residents. After several months of discussion between insurance carriers, we received a reimbursement check for $56,366.50. This evening, we are requesting that these funds be placed in an account for the replacement of the gazebo. Timing of that replacement is not known at this point in time. We've basically set the money aside at this point in time for future implementation.
Great. Thank you for that, Mike. Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions for Mike on this?
Is that amount going to cover the whole cost or?
That is a great question. So the replacement cost at today's monies, Rick Fox, our project manager, went ahead and did replacement cost estimates and all that, received quotes for all of this. Replacement cost for that exact gazebo would be $126,411.11. So with that being said, in relation to this, I don't want to get too far off topic, but in relation to this, part of our downtown master plan is a redesign and reimagination of Old Settlers Park, Sixth Avenue through their Fifth, things like that. We, city staff, have been working with the stakeholders group that helped fund and implement that master plan and our landscaping last year. We have been working with them on some future projects. And one of those future projects would be Old Settlers Park. So the removal of the gazebo, not a good thing, but it might work hand in hand with maybe some future ideas of the gazebo, Old Settlers Parks and reconfiguration, things like that. We have other ideas that would be incorporated in that restrooms, et cetera. So I don't want to get too far off topic, but...
So that money will sit there.
That we'd like to put that money there. Your great question, $126,000 to replace what we had. Configuration, electrical capabilities, today's internet, when we did it then, we didn't have Bluetooth and all that cool stuff. We do now. So not a good thing that the gazebo was removed, but the $56,000 would be a great start for our future implementation on that location.
Thanks. Alderman Sparts?
Kind of probably a little beyond, but for the reimagination, does that include like traffic control or safety? I kind of think it seemed like this is kind of weird that it happened, that we should really, and it might be a safety committee thing that needs to be looked at so somebody doesn't plow into a crowd or something coming off a poplar and...
Sure. Again, great, great question. If you go through there now, we actually did move three of the, four of the pots. We had some of the pots in downtown. We put along the west side of Old Settlers Park, west of where the gazebo was at one point in time, just for that reason. With the redesign, reimagining of the park and that area, safety and security would definitely be part of that discussion. We viewed other places, we viewed safety bollards and things like that. So we would try to implement some of those ideas at this, at this location.
Any more questions for Mike? There being, oh, go ahead.
One more, one more quick question. The master plan and the reconfiguration, are we thinking about adding something like restrooms perhaps?
Oh, I would like that very much. So many, many people. Yes, that's definitely part of many discussions. Again, I want to try and stay on topic, but we looked at locations along the river when we did the River Walk, and that's just not feasible, flood plain, et cetera. But yes, restrooms, public restrooms in our downtown are a very high priority for many different organizations that I work with.
With no further questions, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.
With no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
All right. I will call to order a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, June 2nd, 2025. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's hard to believe we're already in June, isn't it? Thank you all for being here tonight. We recognize a full quorum of our council here with us tonight. Something that we should have done at our last meeting, and I apologize that we didn't do it then, but we're going to do it now. This is a proclamation proclaiming a week, and the week was actually the week of May 18th, but you'll hear here in a minute that it's really every week that we should be recognizing this, this group of our talented, dedicated employees. And so even though it's, it's late, we're going to still read it here tonight. This is an Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services provide vital lifesaving care at the scene of emergencies and during transport to medical facilities, ensuring rapid medical intervention when every second counts. And whereas EMS systems are complex, integrated networks composed of highly trained professionals and organizations working together to deliver critical pre-hospital care. And whereas the City of West Bend Fire Department plays a leading role in the local EMS system, which includes paramedics, EMTs, firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, and healthcare providers serving both West Bend and the surrounding communities. And whereas West Bend Fire Department EMS personnel are highly trained to provide advanced lifesaving medical care 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ensuring rapid response and treatment to those in need. And whereas in 2024, the West Bend Fire Department responded to 3,977 EMS calls, highlighting the ongoing demand and essential role of emergency medical care in our region. And whereas these dedicated EMS professionals engage in continuous training and education to remain at the forefront of emergency medicine, strengthening the quality and effectiveness of care they provide. And whereas National Emergency Medical Services Week is an opportunity for communities across the country to honor and recognize the tireless efforts of EMS providers who serve with skill, compassion, and commitment. Now therefore, I, Joel Longert, the Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of West Bend. And I encourage all residents to recognize and express their appreciation to the EMS professionals who serve our city and surrounding communities with dedication and excellence.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Mayor and Council for the recognition of our EMS providers. EMS is the lion's share of what we do day to day at the West Bend Fire Rescue Department. It accounts for almost 85% of our daily call volume. We gave you the numbers for this year. We anticipate those numbers will crest 4,500 calls for EMS services this week, serving the City of West Bend, the Village of Kewaskam, and the towns of West Bend, Wayne, Barton, Kewaskam, and Fillmore. We cover an immense area right now, and we're proud to say we're doing a good job of it. EMS is a both physically and mentally taxing job, and it requires an immense amount of commitment and dedication to be good at it. I just want to say that I'm proud of my people who demonstrate that commitment as well as competence and compassion in everything they do. I want to thank them for making my job a little bit easier. But outside of that, I also want to recognize, like many things in the city, we operate as one larger team. And I want to thank both our public safety dispatchers for the commitment and professionalism they do or they provide in supporting our service, and someone that is truly behind the scenes and often not seen or heard is our Finance Department. EMS billing is a complicated bag of bolts, if you will. And we have a fantastic team in the Finance Department that really help me every day in making sure that we do our best in revenue collection for the ambulance to try to offset the cost of those services. So I'd like to thank everybody involved in our EMS program.
Thank you, Chief. We are incredibly proud of your organization of EMS and firefighters and the dispatchers and police that keep our community safe. They're about the nicest, kindest, most caring people who work anywhere in the city, and we're so thankful for all of their hard work and service.
Thank you. You're a little remiss by the number of providers.
Providers got a chance to be on the world stage this weekend as they were tasked with assisting the Hartford Fire Rescue Department and providing ambulance and bicycle medic staff for the Women's U.S. Open that was held at Aaron Hills. So they did us very proud and had nothing but positive things from the Hartford Command Staff.
Cool. That's great. Thanks, Chief. Our next item is approval of our Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for May 19th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Zingshaim. Second?
Second.
Second. Brett Engelking, thank you. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda is items two through 17.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Sparts and Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is discussion on possible action regarding an update to the Police Department staff structure. Chief.
Thank you. I hope you had a chance to review the supporting material that we provided, so I'll try to keep my presentation fairly brief. I really appreciate you at least allowing us to have this discussion. Normally, we would wait until our normal budget cycle. However, as we assess this, we've been working towards this position for the last year and a half, or at least being very strategic and measured in our staffing approach. And we saw no real need to wait other than procedural timelines. So I appreciate you at least having, letting us have this conversation. More importantly, we have a very urgent need to move forward with this position, if we are going to move forward, and that is with the implementation of our Next Generation 911 and SCNET. Very key component, I am not asking for additional funding. In fact, I'm asking you to allow me to reduce our operating budget. We, you approved us a technical services position in 2024, which at the time was a vital need for us. Since that time, we've hired a couple more IT workers that have been really putting a priority on the Police Department, and we appreciate IT's help and work with that. But more importantly, when you approved that, I promised you that we would be strategic and measured in our implementation to make sure that we were using the taxpayers' money appropriately, and we were rightsizing the department, not just growing it to grow. So in that, we applied for a grant and were approved for CRY-TAC, which is Department of Justice Federal Support Service for law enforcement through the International Associations of Chiefs of Police, for a consultant to come in and take a third. We thought we needed it, but we wanted to have a third-party view. And we were extremely fortunate to be assigned Ben Hayman, who is the chancellor of basically the IT section for the University of Virginia. He is actually the liaison to the FBI National Academy and sits on the graduation stage when the graduates graduate from the FBI National Academy, which is a really neat situation because we had one of our final meetings at Captain Rollinger's graduation. So we had some pretty high-end help with CRY-TAC. Through their basically year and a half study that Captain Grinwald really championed and helped liaison that process through, they identified we certainly had a tech services need, but our most urgent tech services were needed in our dispatch center with just the dramatic growth and reliance on technology in the dispatch center, and saw a great opportunity for us to synthesize both that tech services piece and improve our service to the citizens through excellence in our dispatch center. That came from interviews of our employees, our peers, and just a high-level overview analysis of the, of our department's needs. We furthered that with Captain Grinwald making this his thesis study program as he attended the Northwestern Command College in the early part of 2025. I attached a synopsis of Captain Grinwald's paper. He's got a tremendous amount of additional data points. If you're interested in reviewing, you certainly can. But that, again, clarified to us that we were on the right path of looking to combine what was the open tech services piece and our third dispatcher position. Combining that position to make it, I'm going to be really honest, it's going to make it, and Brett, you'll remember, it's going to make what Kurt Lulich used to be for our department. Kurt was, he wasn't officially a supervisor in the dispatch center, but he was definitely our technical guru and managed all our programs, and in fact, still manages the majority of our programs, which is a very positive thing, but also a liability to have all that institutional knowledge in one person. But he was also a really good dispatcher and would fill in on dispatch and was an informal supervisor in the dispatch. So when we looked to this piece, we're not trying to steal Kurt back. I know he's doing a great job as the head of IT, and quite honestly, we can't afford him. But we were looking to reinstate that. We also have grown to the point, and not just because of the staffing, but because of the complexity of dispatching, to need a direct span of control supervisor in the dispatch center. Right now, it's supervised by our sergeants and our lieutenants, and quite honestly, they've got their hands full guiding the teams out on the road. They keep an ear on what's going on, but we don't have anyone that's doing spot check reviews, doing accountability, doing audits, being an advocate. We're all advocates for the dispatch center, but someone who's truly advocating from a dispatch perspective. I really could go on and on. I just want you to know that we are very strategic and measured. When we went forward with this, Michelle Hoy was involved throughout this entire process. We asked her to work with McGrath, the salary study, to evaluate everything we've done, make sure that this position was valid, that we weren't just asking to grow government for growing government, and then work with us to determine a level that would be appropriate for wage compensation. They did their analysis, believed that based on, I think more on comparables than job description itself, that this would come into a 65 level. It's the IT analysis. To be honest, we were hoping for 70. IT analysis plus supervision. We'll take 65 for now, right, Cap? But that ends up in a pay scale, ballpark, the market value is around that 88,000 mark. So that being said, if we would eliminate the tech services and we would eliminate the third dispatch spot, which is a total of about 122,000, plus a full benefit package, plus health insurance, we would combine those two spots, so reduce our footprint by one, remove the benefit package, and I think have a better, more efficient use of that staff person, spot, and taxpayer money. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that I think the growth and the needs of the department could support all of those positions, but we do take our role as stewards of the taxpayers' money very seriously within our department, and more importantly, we know that other departments have some pretty significant needs that are probably going to be discussed in the 2026 budget, and we want to be good partners with them as well. So I'm asking that you allow us to make this change. We'll actually be saving, depending on the level that we hire at, between $36,000 and $44,000 and reducing a benefit package and providing excellence in policing within our dispatch center, consistency and advocacy.
What questions do you have? I like it. Do you have anyone in mind in-house for this position, or is this some posted position?
We'll post the position. There's a lot of areas of expertise. We do have very quality dispatchers that have worked here and developed their technical skills, so we'll certainly be taking internal candidates as well. But we will open up to make sure that we're getting the best candidate for that, the taxpayers' money. It'll be a very hard decision to move forward, so we want to see what kind of candidates are out there.
Great. Brett?
Sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the update of the Police Department staff structure as noted.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more comments, questions, discussion?
When do you expect to fill that position, or what are you targeting?
If it's approved tonight, we're going to look to launch our hiring campaign tomorrow.
Just one comment, Chief Daring and Captain Grinwald. I truly appreciate the research, the work, and the rigor went in, that went into getting us to this point, which makes this, I think, for, at least for me, and I think for those on the council, an easy decision to make. And I appreciate the, the view you have, not only from the taxpayer perspective, but also from an overarching city perspective, and recognizing that, yes, there are many departments, and you all have needs. There's not a single department within the city administration that doesn't have needs, and your ability to continue to achieve excellence in policing, as you've often told us, and at the same time, doing it with, without having all the resources that I know you and the team would love to have. So I appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, but it's really my team. Captain Grinwald has worked extremely hard on this project, and our whole team has bought into the fact that it shouldn't be a snap decision, that this warranted us spending a year, year and a half, when Captain Grinwald could have really used some help as a, with a supervisor in the dispatch center. Thank you.
When you wrote your thesis, did you ever think that we would all have a chance to read it? Because I read it last night, and I thought it was great. I gave you a be mine. No, I'm kidding. Nice job. Very nice.
I want to reiterate that also, that it was a good job. It gave me flashbacks to some papers I've had to write, and it was well thought out, and the whole process is thorough and well done.
One last comment. Again, this isn't just a benefit for the Police Department. It supports the whole team. You know, the dispatchers for rescue, for fire, for dispatch even makes public works calls. So it's not just a police department issue, it's a, it's a citywide issue, so that's why I support it.
Good point. Any more comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Our Library Board met on May 20th.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on May 20th. The meeting was called to order with a quorum of members present or dialed in. We recited the Pledge of Allegiance and approved the Consent Agenda, meeting minutes of April 15th, and monthly expenditures. Next was the election of officers, with all current officers retaining their positions. Congratulations to all of them for stepping up. After that, we received the financial reports and fund balance updates. Noted was a deposit for $409 from a vending machine located in the library. This is not your usual vending machine, okay, loaded with chips and junk food. This vending machine is stocked with book recommendations, riddles, maybe a piece of candy here and there, but for a mere 25 cents, one little quarter, you could win a chance to be librarian for a day. Now you can see why $409. Steve says those kids are plugging quarters all the time. They want to be librarian for a day, okay? It's very popular. The Library Director's Report opened with discussion on building maintenance issues. The building's chiller unit of the HVAC system failed recently, resulting in a $22,000 expense and causing a revisiting of the library's strategic planning, budgeting, and CIP. This HVAC issue, along with main entrance door repair bill and the need to update computers in the building, will add to these funding issues in the future. The Board President's Report included questions about the library rec center's use and key control procedures. control procedures that were obtained from staff reports that was taken care of. Also, Steve was asked to explain comments noted on reports that the possibility of scaling back some of the programming at the library. Steve reminded the board that while programs are great draws, in the end, we are in the book business, okay, and funding is driven by the amount of circulations that we have. So programming needs to promote books and reading, not just provide entertainment. So having no further items for discussion, we were reminded that the next meeting of the board is the 17th of June, and then adjourned.
Great. Thank you. Parks and Rec Commission met on May 29th.
Yes, they did. They met on May 29th, and it was a short and sweet meeting. They met virtually at 3:30 in the afternoon instead of the usual 6 o'clock meeting in the evening. Minutes were approved. The only item really on the agenda was the acceptance of all the wonderful donations that we've already heard about tonight. So thank you again to all those very, very generous donors. It really is fantastic. And that really was the agenda for the meeting. I will mention, though, that it's a wonderful summer. We have a wonderful Park and Rec department. Make sure you get out and enjoy everything. They work hard to do what they do. This week, we have the Westbury Bank Aqua Park ribbon cutting on June 6th. That's at 12:45 in the afternoon, and the Aqua Park opens right after that. And then the Beach House Beer Garden, which we all probably would enjoy, will be Friday and Saturday, June 6th and 7th, from 5 to 9. But that's it right now for Park and Rec. They're busy.
You said that was at noon for the ribbon cutting?
Ribbon cutting is 12:45, and then grand opening of the park is at 1:00, or followed by the ribbon cutting.
Thank you. Chief Daring?
I'll just make this really quick. I'd just like to say on behalf of our department head team, I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the elected, for allowing us to have the level of participation that we do in the search for our new city administrator, and tell you that our entire team is very excited to participate over the next two days with interviews, helping with the tours, and the meet and greet on Wednesday. If you were going to ask me to conduct a team-building exercise with our department heads, you couldn't have scripted a better one. Everybody is very looking forward to very positively participating and finding the next city administrator. We feel valued. So thank you very much for allowing us to be part of that.
Very good. I'm going to give my just report next, if you will, just because it's very somewhat similar. We spent quite a bit of time interviewing our candidates. We've narrowed those candidates down. You've all, hopefully by now, have seen who we will be interviewing on Thursday morning. Wednesday night at 5:30, right here at City Hall, is open to the public, and it's a meet and greet with the candidates. I have sent an email out to our entire city staff personally inviting them to come. Just a show of hands, are you all planning to be here on Wednesday night? Okay, good. What I'd like to ask you to do when you come on Wednesday night is wear your red lanyard, what you have on now. And when people come in the door, I'm going to, and we all, thank you for coming. Make sure you meet Tim and Jesse and Eric, and then find one of us with a red lanyard on and give us your feedback. And that's how we want to, or at least that's how I envision gathering the feedback of the night, is literally right then and there, as people come in, give us your feedback. If somebody says, well, I'd rather go home and put it in an email or something, I suppose you could do that. That email would be open records requestable, so maybe tell that to the person, that somebody could open records request your email. We'd rather have your feedback right here, right now, because we're interviewing these candidates the next morning. So wear casual clothes, you know, you don't have to put a suit and tie on. I'll wear something similar to this. It's summertime, it's hot out. Hopefully, the weather stays nice for Wednesday night, and so we get a decent-sized crowd. Invite your friends, invite your neighbors. And that's, any questions about that? At some point during, probably around 6 o'clock, the candidates will ask to give just a quick introduction of themselves and why they want to be the next West Bend city administrator. You can obviously stay as long or as little as you want, but I would love it if you could stay to help gather that feedback. And then Thursday morning, we have our interviews. That'll be a closed-session interview, starting at 7:30. So please be here at 7:30. We'll be upstairs in the upstairs conference room. Clerk, you have that posted, right, for a closed session on Thursday morning?
Yes, it's been posted.
And then Wednesday night as well?
Correct.
Perfect. Any questions about the process? Okay. The other side of that process, Chief talked about, the department heads will be doing interviews with the same candidates. They have one tomorrow, and then they have two of them on Wednesday. And the three candidates will also get a quick tour of the city by some of our non-department heads, and then Chief will gather feedback from how that tour of the city went with those individuals. And then Chief's going to be kind of our spokesperson from the department head team. When they are done interviewing, you know, they'll kind of get their thoughts and reactions to Chief. When we are done interviewing on Thursday morning, we'll have Chief come in and give us that feedback and go from there. The next step of the process would be offering the job, doing a background check, you know, signing and working on a contract. So we will hopefully have an announcement that so-and-so is moving on to that final phase, and it will be that only one person, if you will. But it really doesn't become official until we do that background check, obviously negotiate the contract, and then the contract is brought to a meeting where you all vote on it. Yeah.
So that name is not going to be released until all that background check and all that is?
The name will be released before, correct?
So typically, what will happen is, we'll, you know, part of that meeting is, we'll have discussions about who you want to pursue as a hire. And then between Lee and I, we will negotiate, get the contract all set up, make sure we have the, you know, basically signature on the dotted line to finalize everything, and then the announcement will happen, because it's not uncommon for somebody to, you know, find another position. And we don't want to, you don't want a situation where it's like, oh, let's go hire this person, and then suddenly they, you know, pull out or find another position, and then suddenly we've now told everybody that we selected this person and left two other people that we're now making the offer to as the second best or whatever, right? So it'll be likely the announcement, the formal appointment will prob, my guess is, will probably be the 16th, or the, you know, we'll have a quick special meeting or something like that in between the two meetings, just because there's a big gap there between the 16th and the first meeting in July. Does there have to be an unanimous vote, or how does that work? So it is, it is, I believe, let me check. I was going to say that, but I think it's, I think we might have, let me just look it up here. I want to say it's appointment of a majority or two-thirds or something of the council. Not that one. I know where to look. Three-quarters, city administrator shall be appointed by affirmative vote of three-quarters of the full membership.
So six of eight voting for the administrator.
And the mayor is not voting in this? Does not vote in this?
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Good questions, and we can, yes, go ahead.
So our first choice will be notified right away, obviously, because he'll be involved in the contract. What do they tell the other two? Because one of them might still step up if the first one backs out.
So I think it's, we, that's one of the reasons you have the consultants, is, you know, it's, you know, you hope that it's not going to be a process where it's, you know, oh, we don't hear from, nobody hears from us for two weeks, and then suddenly they get an offer. But, I mean, they all know how the game is played, too, and, you know, that there may be discussions with somebody else or whatever, and, you know, it's, yeah, and it's not always, decisions aren't always made immediately either. So they don't have a specific way of knowing that. Yeah.
We'll talk off, we'll talk through all of this on Thursday after our interviews, and we'll come up with a communication plan and all of that. So all good questions. I hope you look forward to Thursday. I'm excited about it. And that is, I would say, probably a little bit more formal. The candidates will certainly be here in suits and ties. You don't need to wear suits and ties, but, you know, for maybe wearing a jacket or something nice would be appropriate. So that's all I really have for my report. I apologize, I won't be there at the Beach House. I've apologized to Mike several times, going to my mom and dad's 50th wedding anniversary this weekend, and so won't be there to jump on the new equipment, but have fun at that. Any announcements over here? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to report on a couple things from my district. The first was, I had the honor of being asked to, and maybe others at Dallas who got an asked, to be, to march in the Memorial Day Parade that happened between previous meeting and now. And it was a wonderful event, and, you know, there's too many collaborators to thank, but I definitely wanted to highlight something that the speaker, retired Army Colonel Christopher Kalenda, spoke about. In addition to honoring all those who had served in wars, he talked very specifically about a lot of service members who were, who may not have died in conflict but have suffered death by suicide as a result. And as, you know, as a member of the mental health community, I just wanted to highlight just the importance of, you know, remembering the people that still struggle on a daily basis with the impacts of war and so forth. When I participated, I had the honor of carrying a picture of my grandfather, who, you know, he didn't pass, he didn't pass in the war, but, you know, as many of us know, a lot of folks carry the wounds of war with us psychologically. So I just wanted to highlight that. It's a wonderful event otherwise, especially great singers, I remember, at the ceremony. Another thing I wanted to highlight, obviously, we're summers and season, and so Music on Main and Farmers Market are up and going, and definitely appreciate anybody who can attend. They're vibrant parts of our city and always enjoyable to be part of. The last thing, I wish I'd been able to share this sooner, but I received a letter from, and I won't read the letter because it's very detailed, well-researched, and compelling, but a student from the social studies, or AP social studies class, Mark Drake, wrote to me at length about a concern they had as part of their AP civics course to reach out to leaders. But he highlighted the Prefky Brake Company, abandoned factory, and the real ecological concerns with that structure that's still standing, and, you know, right by the Eisenbahn Trail where I walk and part of our district. But just wanted to give a shout-out to Willard Bailey, who wrote the letter. I definitely appreciate, and I'm sure we all appreciate, younger people getting engaged in civics and partly active in the community. And I want to shout-out to the social studies department. When I was a kid in grade school, I used to walk over to the social studies faculty department, because my father was a teacher there for some time. And so I just wanted to applaud their good work and let them know that the concerns in the letter especially are definitely close to my heart, and I'll be keeping that on my mind as we talk with the new city administrator in that search. And just an ongoing work to both beautify our cities and create neighborhoods of safety, free of things like asbestos and some of the concerns that have been brought up in the letter. So just wanted to thank Willard Bailey and let him and that, let him know they'll be responding and hopefully have some solid answers or better questions going forward. So, thanks.
Very good. Anybody else? Yes, Mayor Beth?
I just want to share, I did go to the Mid Moraine Association's dinner last week, and Rhett was there also. It's always kind of fun to meet the village presidents and the leaders of all the other communities in Washington and Ozaki County. And each one gets to brag a little bit on their village or their city. So I bragged very nicely on West Bend, and we also get to rib each other a little bit, so that certainly happened too. But it was, it's always a great experience just to get together with other community leaders and share their ideas, share ours with them, so.
Very good. Thanks for attending.
Just one, while not in my district, actually in Mr. Engelking's district this weekend is the Festival of Angels at Holy Angels. Please come on out and support that community as well. Great food, great music, great games, great entertainment. Balance that, of course, with spending time at the Regner Beach. But please feel free to stop by and see myself, Alderman Buchlich, and city attorney Proust hovering over grills and fryers the entire weekend for award-winning burgers and fried food on site. Enjoy.
Good luck to you. Anyone else? Okay. We have two items to discuss, possibly discuss, in closed session tonight. Both of them are under state statute 19.851E, which is deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discussion on our fire station number one, budget investing of public funds, and a TID-14 discussion. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zinkshaim. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Alderman Sternig?
Aye.
Alderman Sparts?
Aye.
Alderman Engelking?
Aye.
Alderman Buchlich?
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Zinkshaim?
Aye.
Alderman Burquist?
Aye.
All right, we are now in closed session. We will not reconvene or take any action. We will conclude our meeting from closed session tonight. Thanks.